I'd like to call the Planning and Zoning and Building Committee. Call the order, please, roll call.
Alderman Artwoods.
Here.
Alderman Currielli.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sizarski.
He's here.
Okay. Alderwoman Ames.
Here.
Alderman Arti Woods.
Here.
And Alderman Catalano.
Here, and we have a quorum. And next, I need the approval of the minutes of February 13, 2025.
I'll make the motion.
Any corrections to the minutes? If there are none.
You need a second.
You need a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is report recommendation, multiple text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 17. Director, I'm sure you have a presentation.
I do. Thank you, Chairman Catalano. I will walk you through these text amendments, which for the most part are mostly for clarification. The six items that I'll walk you through are clarifying the requirement to plant street trees for new construction, right sizing the number of required replacement trees in our tree preservation section, clarifying the required vote to approve some zoning petitions, exempting temporary structures for special events from the zoning regulations, clarifying where specific fence type height is permitted on a lot, and clarifying the porch encroachment into the required front yard. So the first thing is street trees. The Engineering Standards Manual does require street trees along the frontage of the lot whenever there's new construction. However, the code, the Engineering Standards Manual is not, it's a separate document that's referenced in the UDO, so we thought it would be clearer if it was actually stated in the UDO that you had to do that, rather than going searching through another document that's very thick. So this amendment would state in the requirement that the spacing is required at 40 feet and street trees are required for new developments, right in the UDO language. It's basically just reprinting what's in the Engineering Standards Manual. Regarding replacement trees, some of our new developments over the past several years have sought relief from the number of replacement trees because the lots that they were developing had a large number of trees on them, and it required an enormous number of replacement trees. And if they wanted to do fee and lieu, it was really cost prohibitive. They really couldn't go forward with the project if they had to pay all the fee and lieu, so they've been seeking relief for that. Wooddale's requirements are much more stringent than our other communities, which can be a disadvantage if we're competing against another community for a business that wants to go on a treat lot. So what we're proposing to do is restore the requirements to what they were prior to the UDO update in 2022. What happened in 2022 was our requirements were just doubled. I think the comment came up that, you know, we'd like to preserve more trees. I mean, obviously, that's a good goal for the municipality, but it became kind of excessive, the number of trees that we require. So if you look on the top line, this is what Wooddale currently requires. That's replacement trees more for what I'd see in North Shore communities. If you look at our immediately surrounding communities, four of the five have zero tree replacement requirements. Bensonville's the only one that has some, and it would be consistent with ours if we went back to what it was previously, which is basically exactly half of what is shown there for Wooddale. So it would go down to two for a six to seven inch, and three to eight to 12 inch, and four for a 13 to 29 inch, and five for a 30 inch. That's what we're proposing to reduce it to. But also, if you look at basically the other communities in this area, there's not a lot of tree preservation, or certainly to the extent that we are proposing in Bensonville and maybe Naperville, for the most part, oh wait, and Mount Prospect. But for the rest of the communities, there's very few. We're proposing to put that top, cut that top line in half. That would bring us more in line with Bensonville. Required vote numbers. Currently, our UDO says that four votes of the commission is required.
Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Thanks. I thought you were still on the trees, but I didn't want to. So going back to, thank you for all the work, Villa Park does require trees.
Okay.
I know, because I pay for them all the time.
Okay.
So it's probably in their own manual, their street specifications, maybe that's where they have it buried as opposed to the code, so it is every 40 feet the same on every frontage that you have. So a corner lot usually winds up to be four to five trees. A regular lot is one to two trees max. As far as being like Bensonville, I don't know that that's my aspiration. I just have to say that. There's nothing wrong with them. But part of my questioning tonight is, because this is probably the third or fourth time I've talked about this since I've been on the council, and it goes up and goes down. We spend an inordinate amount of time, and every time somebody complains, we need to change the code. So I'm okay with reducing it, but in doing that, changing this number, I know that in other sections, we've given relief to the Community Development Director to reduce the number, right? There's some verbiage that you can on your own by 25%, if they remember the number correctly. Also, we've looked and acknowledged that junk trees aren't included, so that kind of reduced it, your ability to reduce it by 25%. So my concern is going down from four, which everybody's arguing is a lot, down to two, and then you can reduce that, you know? Can't we simplify it and go, this is what the number is? I'm a tree guy, so I'm okay with the trees, and I could talk about Naperville, who, while theirs aren't high enough, you've got to hire a tree doctor, the same as Glen Ellen, right? With cutting the roots, you know, you have to have somebody come out, treat them, hormones, and go through the whole process to save every tree. So it's not as simple as that. And again, I'm okay reducing it, but I'd like to get to somewhere where we can actually stand behind and everybody agrees, as opposed to the next developer comes in and goes, I don't want to plant 40 trees, right? I get it. You're doing a $40 million or $60 million project. That's not a big light item, you know? I don't know why we continually talk about trees. Also, planting trees is probably the number one thing we could do for reducing or increasing or bettering the air quality in the area, given trains and planes and automobiles, so I don't know why I rushed to give it that. Thank you.
Continue, Director Springer.
Thank you.
Oh, Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, right, we've gone from, we've raised it a couple times, we're a tree city, understand, but every time somebody comes up here, I know we had somebody in Industrial Park, they were doing something, we gave relief, we keep giving relief. So somewhere, we have to draw the line, and whether it's half or something. But then, as far as giving staff more, another 25%, does that go away, or if we dropped this, we're done?
So I can respond first to Alderman Woods. So this survey is for the Villa Park trees. This is for replacement trees, not street trees that are required for each development. That was the first item I went over. So this is the second one, so that's why it says zero. So when you cut down an existing tree on a lot, these are the replacement trees. About simplifying it, the director does have the ability to administratively waive 25%. And then we also previously adopted the code requirement that if it's a junk tree, and we don't want it here anyways, you don't have to replace it. The leftover amount of trees, so those things are taken off the top, so the two trees won't get reduced further. It's basically those two things are taken off the top, and whatever is the remainder goes through this calculation. So I think it's simple, and, you know, to answer your follow-up question, you know, the only issue that we may, you know, want to consider further, I mean, like, we'll be good with this if the council is good with this, but we still are higher amongst, you know, if you look at the 15, 18 communities, we'll be the, you know, the third or the fourth most restrictive. But I think this proposal to go back to what it was is appropriate.
Okay, continue.
So voting. Right now, the UDO says that you have to have a vote of four yes votes to get an approval or a recommendation for anything. There are seven members on the CDC, and so a majority of seven is four. However, let's say only five people or four people show up to a meeting, that's enough for a quorum, four, but you'd need 100% of those people in order to get a positive recommendation. State statute says that only amendments and variations require four votes. All the rest of them can have a simple majority of the members that are present at the meeting. So if you have five people at the meeting, only three votes are required to make a positive recommendation. So we are proposing to align our voting requirements with state statute.
Mayor, go ahead.
Quick question. So anytime they come into CDC, there's going to be an amendment or a variation right off the bat, so.
Then it would require four votes regardless.
Okay, that's where I was getting at, okay.
Alderman Woods?
So following the same question, so what other things come to the CDC?
Those are the ones, the special use PUD and subdivisions. Those would go with a majority of those present at the meeting. So if there were four, it would be three. If there were five, it would be three. If it was six or seven, it'd be four.
I have to say I'm vehemently against reducing the number, period. I mean, if we can't get four votes from the community to go, I mean, if people aren't showing up, then you need different people on the board, for one, but to reduce it to where, you know, three people then can pass huge PUDs, or a big thing, special uses can be a big thing. I don't see the, we've operated the same way for many years. I don't understand the rush to reduce the requirement.
I'm reducing it, is it? It's not reducing it, it's increasing it.
So this came up when.
Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Yeah. Just a quick comment. I think this leaves us vulnerable, Alderman Woods' point, so, well-intended, I think, but I think to Alderman Woods' point, if we don't have enough people, then we just need to find new members, right? Because this worries me.
Okay. I was, I'm fine with that. The reason it came up was we had an issue where it went forward with a recommendation for denial, because I think there were four people there, and three people voted yes, which was a majority of those there. And so our attorney suggested maybe we should follow state statute like most other communities. But if the council doesn't want to do that, that's fine. I'm happy, whatever you would like. Temporary structures for special events. So we.
Go ahead, Mayor.
So are we going to vote on this one separate? Because it sounds like we still want four.
Right, right. So we want to do the vote now, then?
Well.
No, at the end.
At the end?
We'll do that one separate.
Okay.
And the rest together.
All right. Right, we should be at four, I mean.
For this, our special events that are conducted by the city, we usually have more than one tent, temporary tent on the property. We have lots. And for some reason, when the UDO was created, it didn't exempt out special events for this. And so technically, before we have every special event, we're supposed to get a variation to have more than one temporary tent. We haven't been doing that, but it's probably a good idea to go ahead and change the code to reflect that. Special events has its own whole own chapter in the city code, and so everything's covered under there, and we can just exempt them out of the UDO. Clarifying where fence heights are. So, let me get to the. So the current fence regulations say that only three-foot decorative fences are permitted in the front yard, and all other fences are only permitted behind a line extending from the front wall of the principal structure. That's a little confusing. The purpose of this amendment is to clarify that the front yard is measured from the front wall of the principal structure, as it was intended, rather than the required setback line. So here's an example. This is the setback line for the house, and this is their front yard, it faces the street. And if, it can be interpreted that a fence here, if I wanted to enclose this in my front yard, I can put up a six-foot fence. Now, the way the code reads is the building line. You know, you can't put a six-foot fence in front of the building line. What that was intended to be was the line of the building. Unfortunately, we don't have a definition for building line. It's not a term that exists, so it can be very confusing. And we had someone put up a six-foot fence in front of their home. This clarifies it to what it was intended, and always has been, to basically say, we're clarifying the language to remove any discrepancies, and you can't put a fence beyond the front line of the building. So we've just changed the language to the front wall of the principal structure. And we're not changing any regulations, we're just clarifying in this one. And then the last one is porch encroachment into the front yard. This is another one where the language is unclear, and it can be interpreted in a number of different ways. So right now, porches are allowed to encroach six feet into the required front yard, or beyond the building front line, the building setback line. So if you have a house that's right up, built exactly on the setback line, you can build a six-foot porch encroaching into the front, the front yard. You know, the idea is it's an open area, it's not, you know, enclosed, it's not bulk. What the code currently says is front yard. Well, front setback line, front yard, building line, all of those have different definitions. And so we wanted to clarify that it's measured from the setback line, because houses aren't all exactly constructed on the setback line. Some houses are set back further, and some may be non-conforming and are actually beyond the setback line. And so we want to clarify that, let's say, your setback, your building line, that your setback line is 25 feet, but your house is set back five feet further, 30, you get more than a six-foot front porch. You get that five feet up to the building line, plus the six feet encroachment into the yard, so you're getting 11-foot front porch.
Mayor, go ahead.
Question, though. So we have a lot of people, and we raised the lot minimum coverage. So what happens then? Does that become lot coverage, or because some people are going to put, might put a concrete, some will put the wood porch with gravel underneath, does that come into play also? Because, you know, some people put the entire length of their house.
Correct. So the answer is yes. It always has, and that's not changing. Porches are defined as something with a roof structure, and any roofed-over structure is considered lot coverage. So that's not changing. And really, the regulation isn't changing, we're just clarifying where we measure it
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, so isn't building line riddled within the code? I remember, I'll put it nicely, debating this, because this comes up not only here in all other communities, of which line you're using, we've had many conversations. So I'm okay eliminating building line altogether, if it's in there, and getting rid of it, because it's very confusing. It's only a holdover from, I think, surveying language when they originally led it, all these things, years ago, at least that's my understanding, that we go with setback line, because that's consistent throughout codes and zoning throughout all municipalities. That's the only consistent thing that I can see. So I'm okay with that. So when we, is there clarification as to what the, when we're talking about the yards, of which yard were in the front yard? Because that's always, especially on a corner lot, that was your example.
Mm-hmm.
So is that clarified also in the same?
That is actually very clear. That part of it is very clear in the UDO. I may have misspoken, I said building line. Building line is not a defined term in the zoning code. We have build-to line, building, we have setback line, and we have yard, front yard.
I think that build-to is a derivative of the build line. So if we got rid of that language altogether, I'd be happy, and if you could call all your, you know, buddies in all the other communities, get rid of it, too.
We can add that to the list. We have an ongoing list of text amendments to the UDO, and every opportunity that we have, or we don't have three cases on a CDC, or as things come up, we'll bring it forward. So we'll definitely add that to the next.
So we're on adding the list, if I could. So I think the number one call is sheds. We can give 100 variants to $60 million projects, but we can't build sheds in Wooddale or do driveways. So I think we need to look at the language in both of those. Those seem to be the number one hot issue around the building department for residents
You are correct.
Well, there's that.
So we recently reinterpreted that section of the code. I think previously, the interpretation was incorrect. We can vary those things, but we will take a closer look to make sure it captures everything that we wanted it to capture. So.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
We have a hot tub coming, oh, that we, it's either coming forward. And if a strict reading, as had been looked at it previously, would say that you can't vary accessory structures. However, when we looked at that, we realized you can't vary accessory structures. So going forward, there's a new interpretation for that section.
Good, thank you.
Go ahead.
Nothing? All right. That is it. We did not receive any public comments, and legal counsel did review this language and approved of it. And the staff concurs with the CDC, they voted six to zero to recommend approval.
Okay. So right now, we're going to vote on the clarification on the requirement for vote number? And Alderman Woods?
Thank you. If we could go back to the trees, just so we're, you're, trees. So what we're saying, what we're voting on when we say yes to the trees, is that the four is going to be two, the six is three, the eight is four, and the 10 is five?
Correct.
You still maintain 25%?
Correct.
Variants in the junk trees don't count?
Correct.
And we won't have to hear about trees or windy developers ever again?
Well, I'm not sure about that.
Okay. I just want, just wanted to make sure.
Mayor?
Except the 25% on the two won't go up. You said that one, which they have two.
So the way it's calculated is, we look at, we get an inventory of the trees, and let's say there's 280, like there were on Limmark. And right off the top, we delete those that are not, that are dead, and those that are junk trees. And then we take, I have the ability to tick off another 25%, and let's say there's 100 left, or 90, I think it was, with the holiday recent development. That is what gets applied to this. So it'll still be two trees for all of the trees that are required to be replaced.
Arti Woods, go ahead, Alderman.
Just really quick, this was the CDC meeting that was not recorded, right? This was the topic then? Okay, I just want to make sure I have them lined up. Thank you.
Alderman Woods?
Back with the trees, because we're also, I forgot this part, so we're marrying the street manual to the UDO, so this number, I'm sorry, the mic was off. So we're marrying the street manual to the UDO, and in the street manual, it's one tree per 40 feet, face frontage of property, right? Commercial, I'm assuming that accounts towards residential. So if you have a 50-foot lot, you're planting one tree. A corner lot, you're planting whatever, three or four trees, whatever the lot size dictates. How does that fall into the two, or is that a separate line in here?
So there are two completely separate changes. The first one is if you're building a new building, you have to provide these street trees.
Okay.
The second thing is, if you've got a lot, and there's a bunch of trees on it, and you want to tear them down, we require you to replace them. And so two separate items.
But so is the, but back to what you said, that's what I'm trying to clarify. So is the street manual language going to be embedded in the UDO? Or is it just going to have the reference to the street manual for the street trees?
For the street trees, it's in the engineering standards, and we're copying it into the UDO.
Right, so you're going to take that language from the manual, street manual, and embed it into the UDO?
Correct.
So that they're, okay. That's, I just wanted to, that this wasn't overriding, that is going to be two pieces. So when we're saying yes, those things are both going to happen simultaneously, right?
Okay.
I think I'm done.
You're done?
Definitely.
You want to make a motion on that?
We're going to vote separate on this one, because we're making a change, too.
I had a question.
Go ahead, Alderman Coria.
Could you go back to the start? The purpose for not doing a one-to-one replacement has to do with considering age of the tree, the larger the tree, you want to replace it with more younger trees? In the example for a 30-inch, that's a, would, somebody would consider that to be a rather large old tree, correct? But what if you have a situation where multiple trees come up from the same spot, like two or three trunks? And you're measuring diameter, are you measuring two or three trees, or are you measuring the whole system as one?
So there is a way to measure clump trees, is what those are called, and I can't remember what it is, but I know you're not, you're not measuring the blank space in between. Do you have any idea? No? That's fine. Don't worry about it. But there is a forestry standard for that. I just don't know what it is off the top of my head.
Okay, but that would potentially be a old large tree, that would be several younger trees, correct? Okay. Okay.
So Chairman, I think the idea was to first vote on items one, two, four, five, and six.
Correct.
And then we'll vote separately on three.
Right. So did we have a motion on the first one? If not, I'll make the motion for the.
Second.
Okay, for the text amendment, but eliminating the third one, the vote in.
Right.
Okay.
One, two, four, five, and six.
Right. So a roll call, please.
Alderman Artwoods?
We're never going to hear about this subject again, which was promised. I vote yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizarski?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Arti Woods?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
Yes, and motion carries. And the. And the next one is, um, I'll make a motion for, to keep the vote in, um, of the CDC at, uh, at the majority of four. And, um, that is my motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
So for, for, for clarity?
Yeah.
Nothing will change?
Right.
Right?
Correct.
Okay.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizarski?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Arti Woods?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Director Springer. Next is items to consider at future meetings. We have variation for the property located at 458 Dominion Drive, coming up March 27th. And then we have the community park plan, also come in March 22nd, uh, excuse me, 27th. Um, any other, um, items to consider? Mayor?
Yeah, regarding the community park, I mean, at special events last week, I was thinking, because I've heard the, the, the building, whatever the structure's gonna be, either on the south side of the property, or the north side of the property. We have special events. I asked the committee, you guys have a problem if we put three concerts on the north side, three concerts on the east side, just so we could see how the flow goes, uh, and see how it works out? That, that's all we could probably talk about that, at that time. I, I don't think it's that big of a deal, but at least you get to see before you put up.
Did everybody vote for that?
No, I, we have a discussion. There'll be a discussion. I asked the committee, they really didn't say anything, so I figured, okay, I'll bring it to the council.
Okay. But, again, there's no, any other?
Are we voting again on that, no?
No. No, that's, that's items to consider.
I've heard both ways. I've heard both ways, so.
Okay, so, I'll, I'll make a motion to, um, to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.
All right, I'd like to call to order the Public Works Committee meeting, let the note ticker note that the same elected officials and staff are present. Uh, first off, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 13th, 2025.
Second.
Any comments, questions, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Report and recommendation? We got a bunch tonight. So start with, uh, approval of an agreement between the City of Wooddale and John Neary Construction Company Incorporated for the ash lift station improvement project, in an amount not to exceed $847,775. That is my motion.
Second.
Um, we are gonna start with Brett, I believe, on this one, right? All right?
So basically, this lift station is from 1959, and it's, uh,
Nice.
one of our oldest lift stations. Um, and the pumps that are down there, we can no longer get the replacement parts for it, and we're gonna convert it, uh, from a drywall type, which is more dangerous for staff to go down, to where we can pull the pumps out. So, it'll be a very, um, you know, very valuable to the city to go forward with this project.
Any questions on this one? Roll call, please. Oh, sorry, Tony?
Hold on, hold on. Okay. One question. Uh, any reason why the estimate, the estimate is so low compared to the bids?
Um, you know, it's, it's about 10% off, and what we're just seeing, I believe, is a lot, a lot of inflationary issues, you know, uh, with it. But generally, with engineering bids, if you're within 10%, that's usually considered relatively acceptable.
There's only one within 10%?
Oh yeah, all the, all the other ones? Yeah, well, I mean, I just meant the bid that was accepted. Yeah. Um, a lot of it has to do, a lot of these projects are driven by supply and demand. Um, how many projects are out there, how much work the contractor already has. So if a contractor already has a lot of work, you'll see those real high numbers. If they're looking, as you remember, last year with the INI, it came way under, because there wasn't as much work out there. So a lot of it is supply-demand issues. Alderman.
Alderman Catalano?
No, uh, as for duration of the construction, uh, how long is it gonna take?
We, we have it as, uh, 12 months, but the, um, the generator may take longer to deliver. The lead time of generators is actually kinda over that right now, so, you know, as long as they show documentation that they ordered it right away, uh, that part may extend past that.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, so is the, uh, level of urgency? I, I guess the, the question goes, so, everybody's busy, that's why bids are high, right? I, that's where the market's at. Would it service, and I know that Itasca and a couple other communities just pushed projects off after seeing all the bids, because they were 10 to 20% higher than what they thought. Uh, one recently rebid and increased the project, added another thing to it, to get the price to go down. Would there be any benefit to holding off to next year and rebidding for the spring?
Uh, normally, I would say yes, but one of the pumps is missing a piece of its impeller, so if more comes off, I'd just be worried. And in, in rain, uh, we still need two, two of those pumps running. Uh, dry weather, it's fine with one pump, but, uh, just because of those age of those pumps, and they're no longer, uh, supported, um, you know, I would sleep better if we did go forward with this, but you're right.
Once again, I can't. I knew there was a reason he was sitting in the audience. So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Uh, yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizarski?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Arti Woods?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. Next is approval of an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Sangaro Central LLC for the fiscal year 2026 through 2029, beneficial reuse program in an amount not to exceed $245,675. That is my motion.
Second.
Some commentary on this one?
Yes, um, so, January 1st of last year, um, when we were talking about bid numbers, uh, up till this point, agricultural things were exempt from, um, prevailing wage rate, and the Illinois State Legislature, uh, made a law effective last January, that, uh, now there would, for Illinois, there would no longer be an agriculture exemption. So, um, we were kinda concerned with what this would do to the prices. Fortunately, just as ash was over, um, it's, uh, I feel very fortunate on this one, or we feel very fortunate, that this actually came under our estimate. So, um, fortunately, we have, you know, a nice bid on this, and, and we should be locked in for three years, which will be nice.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Arti Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizarski?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Arti Woods?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, approval of a four-year contract with CSEC Tree Services for the brush collection program in an amount not to exceed $185,500. That is my motion.
Second.
Anything on this one? Oh, Leila, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Um, so this was just the four-year contract for our brush collection had expired, so we went back out to bid, uh, received two bids from two contractors. COSEC was the previous contractor, uh, won this bid as well, and this is just general, you know, brush collection that we don't typically do in-house. Um, and then this contract, the funding gets reimbursed from our, uh, garbage collection contract from Flood Brothers.
Cool. Any questions? Alderman Woods?
Yeah, so I, I know that this was part of the contract. Does the, is the contract open from Flood Brothers? That if this came in at, I'll exaggerate, $500,000, they would pay the bill, or is there a ceiling?
I believe it's a set amount. Um, I think it's about $6,000. I'm, I would have to double check.
Okay, so it's not the whole? Gotcha.
No, it's not the whole, it's a set amount, but I think they've been, uh, flexible, you know, if it's $500 or $600 more than what they would typically reimburse, but, yeah, there is some flexibility.
One, one follow-up. Well, okay, got it. So, from, they had the, the contract, uh, last year, correct?
Correct.
And so, off the top of your head, do you remember the different, difference between the contract? I wanna say it was like 36.
It was only, I think, a $5,000, I think it was $180,000 last time.
Yeah.
And it's 185 now this time.
Yeah, I didn't think it was much. Excellent. Thank you.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, so is this contract, I did, I couldn't figure out the date for the Flood Brothers garbage contract. Is it co-termed to that date? So we're, we're going, so there is a chance that if we agree to a four-year, let's say, somehow Flood Brothers doesn't win the next bid, and they're gone in two years, we'd be on the hook for the other two?
Correct.
Yeah.
It depends on, yeah, what the agreement would be with the new refuse collection contractor.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a question. So they, um, they also got the contract for the, uh, the tree improvement, uh, contract, correct? So, did we get a little discount on this, knowing that they got two contracts?
Um, I think this, I mean, the brush collection contract is, you know, pretty comparable to what it was last year, or the last four years. Tree trimming is a little bit higher, um, I think it's about a $20,000 difference from the last five years, but the tree pruning one's a little more unique, because we base it on, you know, after we did our tree inventory, and I can get into that a little bit more later as well. Um, but it just depends on, you know, what our priority pruning is, and then what our prune cycles are throughout the wards. So it is a little, it's
So we didn't get much of a discount?
Not a set number necessarily, every time we bid that contract.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I was gonna say, look, and that's why I asked about, uh, the last year's contract, that the difference is probably less than 3%. I mean, it's a minor
Right, for brush collection, correct.
Increase, surprising compared to, we just passed an engi- uh, an engineering project that was 10% over.
Okay, roll call.
This is a comparative.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Arti Woods?
Uh, yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizarski?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Arti Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, approval of an agreement between the City of Wooddale and SKC Construction Incorporated for the fiscal year 2026 pavement crack sealing program in an amount not to exceed $31,440. That is my motion.
Second.
Leila, I think you're talking about this one, too.
Yes, so this is part of our annual roadway maintenance program. Uh, this year, we went out to bid with the municipal partnering initiative, which is just a collection of municipalities that kinda offers us a little more competitive pricing on bids. Um, and this is typically used on roadways that are between a six to eight on the scale, which they're not quite ready to be resurfaced, but we're trying to prolong, uh, the life of the roadway, so.
Any questions on this one? No? Roll call, please.
Alderman Arti Woods?
Uh, yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizarski?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Arti Woods?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, approval of an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Robinson Engineering for the fiscal year 2026 management of the industrial pretreatment program in an amount not to exceed $115,000. That is my motion.
Second.
Leila, oh, I'm sorry, back to Brett.
Oh, thank you.
Alan lied to me in his email.
Thank you so much. Um, so basically, in our NPDS permit, we're required to, uh, um, do pretreatment. Um, Robinson's done an excellent job. Uh, we, we've been undergoing an audit, uh, since 2019, and so far, that there's been no problems with it, so we feel they're performing in a competent manner, and, uh, you, you know, we're, we're thankful to go forward with this if we could.
Cool. Any questions on this one? No? Alderman Currielli?
Yeah, there's, um, three tasks that they gave prices on. First one, task one is $114,000, or $115,000, and the other two, no prices listed. Are we, is this motion for just task one, or is it for the whole agreement with the costs to come later for tasks two and three?
Um, essentially, we, and what we've been doing is approving this, you know, for this not to exceed amount, and, uh, there's, it's basically man-hours, and, and depending on, like, if people have violations, if there's different things, that, you know, it's, it's always stayed under, for, since 2019, the, the, you know, the, the total budget amount. Um, and we anticipate the same for this one, for the whole thing, you know? Uh, we can't predict exactly all the, the things that'll be needed in this period. Um, some people require more attention if they start having violations, different things, but we anticipate this whole thing will stay under the, the council-proved amount.
So all three tasks?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Alderman Arti Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizarski?
Uh, yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Arti Woods?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. And finally, approval of a five-year contract with CSEC Tree Services for the Parkway Tree pruning program in an amount not to exceed $200,000. That is my motion.
Second.
I'm assuming this is the same?
Yes, so I kinda went over this a little bit earlier, um, but this was an off-year for pruning, uh, for us, and so just rebidding, you know, the contract to get on a five-year pruning cycle, uh, the first year is kinda meant for priority pruning, you know, any trees that may be causing risk. Um, and then, the actual bid amount was only, I believe, $181,000, but we kind of added a little bit of a buffer in there, uh, to, you know, potentially include any other priority removals as well.
Do we have with the tree inventory? Is there a priority list on?
Yes, so with the tree inventory, so that's what that first year is. It was like the one and two priority trees, but because it came in so low with that first year, you know, we were thinking we could also hit some of the priority three trees as well.
Alderman Catalano? What, what is the schedule, uh, gonna be like in the wards? How are they gonna?
Um, I would have to look at the bid, but I believe it starts in Ward Two, and then it goes, cycles from like two, three, four, and then back to one. So each year, it would be a different ward.
Yeah. But if, if something needs attention, they'll go out and take care of it, right?
Right, so for the priority pruning, that would be citywide.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, forgive, maybe this is a dumb question, but, um, with a lot of the development on 83, in the data centers, would the trees, the Parkway trees, be our responsibility, and if so, would that, was that accounted for in this pruning?
Um, they would become our responsibility, they wouldn't be in this pruning cycle. I guess it would depend, you know, once a tree is planted, it takes a while for it to become mature before you can start pruning it. Um, but, you know, we would include that in future schedules, and the contractor, uh, they're, you know, pretty flexible with us as well, where if we needed to prune a tree in that area, they would work with us on pricing.
Okay.
Mayor, please.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it's Ward Four, then Three, One, and Two. That's right.
Whoa, whoa, she said two.
I'm looking at the list.
You can't be changing it over.
I ain't changing anything.
I was talking right to the person.
I'm looking at the list they gave us.
Alderman Woods, did you have some?
Right away. Um, back to the contractor trees, 'cause they're a good question. Uh, maybe, Jeff, you could answer the, isn't, isn't there like a two-year guarantee, warranty with the trees, or by the developer, on, like, trees?
For replacements?
Correct.
Yeah, I know we've enacted that before, even on some of our own projects, in City Hall parking lot, there is some sort of warranty. I think it's actually, um, project-dependent, um, but you can go ahead and look and see what that is.
I, two years stuck in my head.
I don't know the exact amount, but there usually is a timeframe.
Follow-up? Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Alderman Arti Woods?
Uh, yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizarski?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Arti Woods?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, items to be considered at future meetings, Addison Road Water Main Replacement Construction and Addison Road Water Main Replacement Construction Engineering, both on March 27th. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?